Has has improved or done things properly.
They're phenomenal, absolutely. We have benefited greatly from.
From others, right?
Yes. The other scenario that Dr. Baller mentioned was same thing, same six million dollars going into technology over the next two years, the bigger dip right up front. And then fifty percent of that construction. And again, I didn't mention on the last one, the construction takes place only in the last five years. The first five years are unaffected by intermediate school construction. The property acquisition is in the first five, but the construction doesn't hit until those year six through seven. As you can see with this model, it takes us pretty low on both the WADA and Article thirty-nine in two thousand nineteen and again in two thousand twenty-two. Using the fifty percent model. And then the debt for that would be two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty in that. So that's sort of the options moving forward. And again, this is addressing all of those issues, cash with every single one except for the anchor property and the six million dollars going into technology upfront.
Is the ECO school that you got there in the second bubble, is that a new facility or is that the academy that Mr. Fairley was referring to?
It's a new intermediate prototype.
One thing I would think we need to consider is that I don't, I can't imagine an identified need leading, but I can definitely see more identified needs coming along. Especially as we get out to, whereas the, I'm like, oh good, we'll have money back in twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah, I guess the other consideration is with the intermediate school, look at the ones we've just built. We had to ask commissioners for two point four million to operate those schools. I mean, we're talking about a huge increase in operating cost. And the more schools we add, the more upkeep, the more maintenance costs. You've got aging schools, Barnum's still built in nineteen twenty-six. It looks like community high schools, some renovations, it's probably that old maybe, I'm not sure how old it is, it's pretty old. Right, with the aging, aging schools, you're gonna have more renovations and more maintenance. Adding more schools, you know, is only an increase in our operating cost.
And I believe at this, I mean, at this point, this is just for information, just just talk away, kinda think about something so we don't have to come to any kind of conclusions.
No, it's just something, he sent me back in the.
Do we have copies of this?
He's gonna email that, he's talking about it as well. Any other questions? Thank you, Bernie. And now we have Monty talking about technology report.
Good night. Do a little more technology now. We have to switch. I haven't taught school in a long time, but I can still dance on the podium, how much time do I have?
All you want.
Time will change your time.
I'm not used to your time.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Thirty seconds, they're gone?
The best way of starting this off is just to say, we have made a great plan to spend the amount of money that we thought we were gonna get annually, as we always have, we got a lot of money. And so we have a plan in place. And our plan in place has always been about how much money we thought we were gonna be able to afford, how much time we actually have to get things done that we need to get done. And we've been operating on that philosophy for about thirteen years now. When we had an opportunity to think about more, and I'm talking about a lot more, maybe double or triple more. One's mind begins to expand about the things that you can do. And so we started that way. What I wanna do is I wanna give you just a little bit of what our current condition is, and this may be sounding a little bit too technical for some, but I'm gonna make it just about as simple as I can make it for you. The network that we have currently is from the central office out to the internet and from the central office out to the schools, okay? Those are two clouds. The top cloud is from the central office out to the internet. We have five hundred megabits. Before Christmas, we had two hundred and fifty megabits. And they automatically just gave us twice as much because we were using that much more. And the state of North Carolina will continue to give us more as we need it. There are several school systems across North Carolina that are up to one gigabit to the internet and two gigabits to the internet. As we require more, they give us more. No cost to us whatsoever. On the other side is we have now with Charter Communications thirty gigabits to what we consider the cloud. And that's, that's all the schools go into that thirty bit, that, that cloud, and then thirty gigabits come into the central office. So each school, including transportation, has one gigabit to the school. This is phenomenal and fast. And we can upgrade that as much as we want to. And basically, that one doesn't cost us anything either. So the more we use, the more we get, okay? And the state pays the difference between E-rate and what we pay. So if E-rate pays eighty-three percent, the state of North Carolina pays the rest. It's a no-brainer. We can increase it and go as fast as we wanna go. That infrastructure is in place and it's fast and it's functional. And with it, we can do many, many more things, but what we have to do is we have to go to the school. In this school, and that big square is the school, again, this might get a little bit complicated for you, but at the top right-hand corner is that cloud, that one gigabit cloud that, that comes into the school, that's how much data is available to come into the school or transfer to the central office. But once you get into the school, the first place that it goes into is what we call the MDF, and that's the, that's the media distribution facility right there. It's the main place where all the communications come into the school. Basically, that would be the media center, the library is where they are about ninety-five percent of the time. Inside of there, we have a server, we have a computer sitting there, and that computer basically takes care of all of the technology in that school. It's routed out to what are called IDF, which are intermediate distribution facilities. And then from the intermediate distribution facilities, they go to the wireless access points, then wirelessly to the laptops, or they go directly to a PC via cable. You following me so far? Up in the top half, left-hand corner, our schools are running about eighty percent at one hundred megabits to the desktop. One hundred megabits to the desktop. That's considered slow now. What we wanna get to is we wanna get to one gigabit to the desktop. And ideally, what we need to do is go ten gigabits in between the MDF and the IDF. Now, that's called infrastructure. Everything I've talked about so far is infrastructure. And our infrastructure was developed and installed thirteen years ago when I got here. And in thirteen years, we put an awful lot of technology in Buncombe County Schools. And we're stretched. We're at probably our limit as to how much more technology that we can go. Well, given this amount of money that we're talking about, we're talking about going a lot further with a lot more technology. And even our onboard policies are gonna say in requests that we go to a one-to-one environment with that much technology that we're going into Buncombe County Schools, we need an infrastructure that can support it. As of today, I've got three hundred days in Buncombe County Schools. This will be the last thing that I would do. And you reset for another ten years, another fifteen years. And we can do it. But that's what has to be done before we can think about anything else. Because the other things that we wanna think about, which are numerous, and I got them listed here, are all fantastic, gee whiz, wow, technology, Buncombe County Schools were number one, and we could do that. You can think of a lot of school systems across the state of North Carolina who, the best school system in the whole country, fifty-six hundred kids. That's one history for us. Twenty-six thousand kids, completely different environment. We can get to their environment with this infrastructure build and smart buy of technology in the future. We need a network operations center. Currently, the network operations center that we have in the central, central office is way too old. It was built by me over the last thirteen years, and it's Frankenstein, there's no two ways about it. We, we built it over plenty of years and with little money and plenty of growth and just did the best that we can. But we've got an opportunity when we construct the STEM to build a brand-new, larger space network operations center. That would be state-of-the-art, and again, lasts for another ten to fifteen years. The one that we've got right now, we're running on a Band-Aid. If you wanna talk to that man in the corner back there, tell him how many times he comes and visits me about the, the air conditioning that we have. And, and how many times that we've had to unfreeze it and we all cross our fingers when we're gone for three days or five days for spring break and wondering whether or not that air conditioning would go out and nobody be around to shut down that technology and let it overheat and smoke everything in there. The point is, is that we've got an opportunity with the STEM center that we can build an infrastructure location centrally in the central office that would again last for another ten years. These are the things that we can do in strategic development. I'll not write, you know, read them to you. I'd like to send this to you if you're, if you're willing. There's a, there's probably another fifteen slides here. This was a presentation that I gave to our MTAC committee, is well aware of everything that I've talked about and everything that I'm displaying to you. And that conversation was about twenty, thirty minutes long. I don't wanna go through all of that with you, but if, if you'll allow me to, I'll go through these slides real quickly and I'll also send it to you. Is that a better way to go on it?
Sounds good.
Okay. These are some global specifics that we can get into. These are the things that we've been talking about in MTAC, these are the things that we've been talking about in Buncombe County Schools for years. And the opportunity that we have to build the infrastructure is what we need to do. Now, the building that infrastructure, going back to the fact that we have to do those things that I was talking about, is expensive. I'm gonna, I'm gonna definitely spend a good chunk of that change that we would be getting, whatever it is, whether it's, whether it's, the only two million dollars that, that we're gonna get out of capital outlay, these things have to be done for infrastructure regardless, if you wanna go any further in Buncombe County Schools. These are our high school objectives. Some of these objectives, well, we have, we're gonna, we're gonna end up doing regardless. They're already on our plate. Oop, I need to go to that one. Middle school objectives? That was put out of place.
Monty, would you talk about the Mondo access because that's got so many curriculum implications now?
Well, specifically, we have one right now in a high school, and that principal just left. And it is a pretty phenomenal device. It's actually, if you can think about it for just a second, it's a iPad that is about sixteen inches big, okay? It's humongous. Has a camera on top, it has a, a, a audio underneath it. You could set it up at the end of this table right here and show everybody at this board right now, and then we could display that and have two-way conversations with any other school in Buncombe County Schools or any four other schools in Buncombe County Schools. And it's, it's a, it's a fantastic way in which to do staff development, distance learning, communications, meetings. We could have staff meetings that didn't involve everybody coming to the central office. We could actually set up one of them right here in this room, set another one up at each district location where everybody went as principals to maybe the high school of that district, and we could have a principal's meeting and not do any traveling. That's a, that's a great way to do a business.
How much is one board?
One board is around six thousand dollars. I think we could get a much better price if we buy those in mass, I, I do that pretty well. And I would recommend that we have at least two in the high schools, two here in the central office, one in each middle school and one in each elementary school, as well as two in the STEM school.
More and more high school courses are moving toward the middle school. That, that is handwriting on the wall. So this could be a delivery method to allow us, for example, to put a, to put a teacher located here at the central office, but allow that course to be taught through this Mondo system at every single middle school. And again, because the staffing issue as an unfunded, again, unfunded mandate or even recommendation from the state, where are you gonna have a staffing board? This may be, as well as world language, this is another vehicle that we're looking to help us try to get equity out there with our world languages.
Over on the top left where it says, create general population labs with virtual desktops, we have an opportunity, if we have gigabit going to the desktop, that instead of having those servers in each school, which is very difficult for us to maintain, we could bring back to the central office and get larger servers instead and go back to a centrally distributed environment instead of a distributed environment. Remote distributed. This, the speed of that network would enable us to do that. Also, that network would enable us to go to what's called VoIP, voice-over-IP. That functionality would be more capable for us right now. I'm not really excited about voice-over-IP, I know a lot of the places are. The reason I'm not as excited about is because our telephone system in Buncombe County is one of the least expensive in the entire state. We pay very, very little for our phone service and it doesn't make no, I, I can't see a payoff yet to move to voice-over-IP. There, there, there's people that will show you that payoff, but it's years out and I've never had the funds to go in that direction, but this would also enable us to do that.
What about, I don't know how Google Phone works on a commercial scale. I mean, I have Google Phone and it's free for my home phone, so.
I don't know how it works.
I don't know if you can get it free online, but it works great, it has voice sound and everything, just like regular.
Yep. This is our intermediate and elementary school objectives. Now you can see why this took so long when I presented it the first time? This is our, our objectives for the STEM school and ATE tech environments. This is a, this would be a great opportunity for us to get into 3D. 3D display systems are really maturing right now. I think by the time that our STEM school gets there, we ought to be looking at 3D displays throughout the entire school. And it may even go faster than that, I may be thinking about the fact that we need to put those in high schools and middle schools and elementaries as well. These are the things that we need to do for administration. We need more capability for media production and for, you know, the ability to create media for professional development, that would be as, in the high schools and the middle schools as well. We want to be able to display flat panels throughout the schools so that the schools can do their own broadcasting within the schools. A lot of schools are moving in that environment, we could do that with this, this network. That was a conclusion that I came up with, but I wanna go back to another slide that was the comments that we got from MTAC. And the MTAC was a committee that we met here, and you're familiar with who, with who they are and what they do. But the reason I came up with this quote is that things changed. We've always heard that Rome was made and was the greatest civilization in the world because of the road infrastructure that they made, although even that had to be replaced. And that's what we have to do as well. Let me go back. This is our feedback from the MTAC and the leadership team, the considerations and the priorities, and this is probably where I'd like to take some time because this is the input that they came back to us from, from our presentation, that we need to definitely consider the life of the purchase, one-time versus recurring. If, for example, we decided that, you know what, let's just buy all of this technology one time and put it in the hands of every kid in Buncombe County Schools, what a fantastic idea. In three years, you'd have to do it again. We have the money in three years to do it again? Probably not. That's a, that's, you gotta consider that. We have a two-year window of time for this legislation. Legislation, we definitely gotta consider that in our strategy. The infrastructure is paramount, is needed prior to expansion, they recognize that, everybody understands that. The human resources about this, everything that I tried to accomplish in, in this presentation, I wanted to minimize the amount of human resources that we need, but there is no doubt, you add as much technology as we're adding, we not only need resources to make sure that it continues to run, but we need human resources to make sure that the people who are using it know how to use it. And so that is, is one of those things that we've gotta consider on, on a continued basis. Our professional development is affected by that and is definitely required. It is gonna be required by the state of North Carolina as well. Our media center upgrades, very important to the, the people that were in the meeting. Curriculum software wasn't even considered in all of this. That's another cost, but it's, it's a cost that we need to consider at the time that we need it because we can get it at the time that it's required. Does that make sense? I mean, it is, it's snap, it's very quick. We don't have to long think that when all we need is the funds for it, once we identify exactly what we need to accomplish with it. Production rooms for middle school and high school, production of, of the media that we were talking about. We're not, we're not worried about the fact that we're gonna go to a one-to-one environment with this infrastructure or with these funds, we can go beyond one-to-one. Where we've got students that would have their own personal handheld technology, they're also gonna have labs to go to, they're gonna have media centers to go to, they're gonna have technology, you know, throughout the school. So we're gonna go beyond one-to-one, and we can do that. School safety was on everybody's mind, still remains a high priority. Some of the things that I requested in there is the video security that we wanna upgrade in our high schools, middle schools and elementaries. And then we know that we have mandated online testing coming on, and that's basically, it says need technology to cover window. When we test, we have a short window to test in. And if you don't have the technology, then everybody has to run through that technology very quickly. If you have the technology, then you can, you can test everyone very quickly at one time, instead of having to, you know, you kids move out, you kids move in, sit down and have this same set of computers. Expanding our distance learning is, as Dr. Baller was saying, is something that is gonna come in, in very quick leaps as is being mandated by the state of North Carolina and very soon that sixth graders must have, must have a distance learning course before they graduate. Right now, we're, we've got a very small percentage of our school system that are taking distance learning. If, if all sixth graders must have before they graduate, that means we're gonna need a lot more distance learning, that's all there is to it. Any questions?
In terms of that two-year window of time for legislation, I understand that, if, if it comes and if the sixth grade is there, can you do, there's a lot of things there. Can you do it two years?
Yes, sir. I've been very good at spending money, but I'm gonna be spending it for about another nine months. We're gonna, we're gonna have a plan in place.
Logistically, because of, you know, some of that time you're gonna have school sessions, kids in school and so forth.
Absolutely.
I would imagine some of those things would require more disruption, if you will, of some part of the new school day versus other things.
Well, that's the good thing about the infrastructure that as we're considering it, you don't tear down what isn't, what is working until you build what is working. So we shouldn't have any disruptions.
Spacing is there to do all of that.
Yeah, all of that would be available. I mean, we have that, the space is available because what we're gonna replace in those IDF and MDFs is of the same space. I mean, I'm gonna take out one rack that's this big and put it in another one that's this big, only it's gonna be much better technology. That's right.
You may have said this and I apologize, but can you refresh my memory of the MTAC committee, who makes, who makes?
Yes. The MTAC committee is comprised of every level and special interest group in Buncombe County Schools, that's probably the best way that I can say that. We have, we have, we have principals from every level, we have a shared number of people from every district, we are covered from every interest group that you can think of, from special education to CTE.
How many people?
I believe we're right at about forty-five people. We generally have about thirty people that show up. We have parents on this committee, we have central office people on this committee, curriculum staff, technology staff, people who are very interested in technology.
We had students coming in.
We had students as well, I forgot all about that. We have two students on the board.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment, I don't know if you've thought about this, Union County opened their own depot, is what they call it, where they do imaging, they do repair of their one-to-one devices. Is this something that we could do?
Absolutely, I think that, that could be implemented. I like that, that, that process. In fact, we've considered it in the past, I've had students that actually came to work for me in our technology department to add to my staff. And, you know, you can give them limited access so that they're not doing anything dangerous, but at the same time, they get a good education and we get some help. So if we could invent that kind of environment or work that kind of environment, maybe at the STEM school or maybe at the high schools, we certainly ought to consider that.
Yeah, the other thing, I had talked to Mike Webb, who is their superintendent, I guess, over technology. He said one thing they're doing in order to replace, and maybe this is something, I'm thinking to it, it will depend on the legislation as far as replacement costs for devices, they're taking a percent of their state and local dollars specifically from their instructional supply fund, and they had to get the principals to buy into this because that's their money. So I think it's something like, I don't know, ten percent, I'm not sure what the percentage is, I didn't write that down, but so over a five-year period, they will have enough money to replace all their devices again. I don't know if that, that would be something, or if there's another plan that you have for replacement.
We do pretty much that right now. We have a, I wouldn't call it a savings account, but as you were talking to Bernie, and he said that we forward funded the stuff for the, that's because we have the money available and sitting there and ready to go. And so we do build a capital outlay, just enough so that we can consider major purchases or major replacements and to consider how the state of North Carolina will come to us and say, you know, you need to have this level of computer so that we can do this. Two years ago, three years ago, we had to do that for all of our middle schools, I had to buy, I'll do labs for the middle schools, and we had the money available to do that. We're fortunate in the fact that we've got this capital outlay that other school systems do not. And where they would have to go to the county commissioners to ask for funding for technology, we're, we're doing that in-house.
Anything else? Thank you very much. It's exciting to see what's happening or what could happen.
Chip, I just might, just, just a real quick comment, and we said.
And we said this over and over. I think the dangerous thing about this is there's just a human tendency that you have millions of dollars, let's focus in on the digital devices themselves. Let's put those digital devices, I'm just cautioning you, I think it's the worst mistake that we can make because there's two other factors there, and you see them here. You've noticed that the budget that's coming to you tonight requests from our commissioners approximately $360,000 for personnel. Now, why? Because we are currently on a skeleton staff. If we increase, we've got to have additional staff in Bonnie's Department to help with the disbursement of the technology. And we also, very importantly, need to increase the staff to handle the professional development because we can't put our teachers in a situation where all of a sudden we're flooding technology in the hands of our kids and we haven't prepared our teachers for what's coming into that classroom. So I just encourage you, for all of us, to keep in mind how important that support is from an human resource standpoint.
Yeah, and just to share real quickly, I did ask that about Union County, too. They're putting 23,000 laptops in the hands of all their sixth through twelfth graders. They started training their teachers each year. They started with their sixth grade teachers first, and they actually spent 36 days in staff development just on integrating these digital learning devices in their classroom. So you're right, you're absolutely right about the staff training, and, you know, that's crucial for this to work.
Thank you, Ron. Next on the agenda, and I don't know if we have someone presenting this, but this comes from, I believe, the board directive that we did in your last month or month before. We have a series of, I believe, a series, 2000 Board Operations, and they're in your packet. Dr. Baldwin?
I'll take you through this fairly quickly, and this is for discussion purposes only. This is going to come back to you at your board meeting in June, okay? But we thought, we had these policies in place that were directed, that came to us from the board, so we wanted to go ahead and provide these policies to you to allow some, at least some initial discussions, but understand that you'll come to the agenda in the June meeting. And if you'll take a look, and we've included, I think everybody has a copy of the five sets of policies. One of those is new. The other four are simply revisions, it's going to say revision, updates, added addendums to old, it's not really old policy, but policy that's currently in place. Policy code 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. And let me just back up. What the board asks us to do is to draft a policy regarding media statements, board member interaction with the school district staff. Mrs. Churchill amended the motion and included the interaction with board members. Public and other board members should be included in this policy. So again, that was the directive, the charge that was given to us, policy code 2120. And I'm just going to focus on the additions. Certainly can take time and read through all of this and review, but if you'll look under specific board member commitments, model civility to students, employees, and all elements of the community by, and this is new language, interacting courteously and professionally with all school employees, and then encouraging the free expression of opinion by all board members, engaging in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered by the board. Now again, if you'll turn to the back page under number 12, refrain from added language, commenting on current language, investigating or attempting to resolve complaints received personally, but instead direct the complainant to, new language, the appropriate school official in accordance with Buckland Board Policy. Again, this is just addition, additional language. This was a policy that was adopted November 4th, 2010. That's policy 2120. Policy 2122, role of board members in handling complaints. This has much more additional language to it. You'll follow at the top what was added. New language shall, the individual board member receives a complaint from a parent or interested citizen concerning a school matter, shall refer the complainant to the superintendent or designate, that's new language. Then below, if the complaint involves alleged inappropriate conduct by the superintendent, the board member shall refer the matter to the board chair and board attorney. And then the other additional language in that first paragraph is it struck administrative employee in place, the term person. This is all new language in the second paragraph. Board members shall also follow this policy with regard to constituent concerns and inquiries from outside groups as well. In addition, it is a policy of the Buckland County Board of Education that all board members should adhere to this policy and allow the superintendent and administration to investigate and respond to complaints and/or concerns. If an individual board member makes statements to any person or persons or takes any action related to a complaint or concern, the superintendent or designate is hereby authorized to respond as deemed appropriate to any such statements or actions that involve inaccurate or incomplete information. This policy is not intended to limit the right of the superintendent or designate to disseminate information regarding the school system as deemed appropriate. This is additional language to a policy that was adopted January 10th, 2013.
Can we, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So right now, let's say I get a complaint about something at the high school, I usually say, please call Ms. Turner and talk to her, and I'll call back. And I kind of send it to the principal. Does, is that, I mean, does this say I should refer it to you instead? Or am I?
I would refer it to superintendent and designate, so I would say the principal would be the designate.
I mean, I think if it's obvious, refer those folks to the principal, and then obviously they don't have success in resolving it.
I can understand that, thank you.
And another example, I know sometimes I get called because a question has gotten, have been to the principal or the superintendent, and they're not happy with that decision. Could we just add in here that, to refer them to the grievance policy, the new one we just passed, so that they can appeal to the board as far as if they're not happy with a decision made by an administrator?
Yeah, I think so. I don't think that would be a problem. If they've already gone to the superintendent, then, I mean, that's not an issue. I mean, simply refer them to the policy. I'm looking for my pin, so I can make it know that.
Here's one.
I got it. It's rating pins. Would you put that into role of board members? Well, I just think ultimately, you've got to be able to know what to tell a person. And I do think, though, what Ms. Baldwin mentioned is appropriate. If somebody calls and says, well, I've already been to the superintendent, I need your help, you know, go see the grievance policy, it's policy 4050, you know, you can find it on the website at buckland.k12 dot dot dot. So I do think that would, you know, be appropriate.
But if you're displeased with the principal, you wouldn't automatically go to the board? You would refer him to superintendent, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that is only in the instance where it would be, I've already seen the superintendent.
I guess they'd exhaust him. All methods and whatever.
One thing I would caution you all, because we, in our protocol, very standard protocol up here, is if we get a call from beyond the central office from someone in this room, our first question is, have you spoken with the administration there at the school? And I would just say to you that we have found, on occasion, we have heard, oh, yes, I spoke with, and then when we contact the principal, they nor any other administrator or official has spoken. So just cautionary.
And I do think it would still be appropriate, I mean, it would never be inappropriate to refer somebody to the grievance procedure. However, it's still appropriate for you all as board members to inform the superintendent that you told a parent about this. And in most instances, if they get to Dr. Baldwin or the appropriate central office administrator, and they're still not satisfied, that central office administrator, Dr. Baldwin, is going to refer them to the grievance procedure too. So.
I just have an example, a question about, I'm going to use an example. If it's more of, not necessarily a complaint, but a question, for instance, I'll use an example, if somebody has a question as to how spring break was decided, and they call me, and then I myself would like the information, is it appropriate to go ahead and contact whatever administration individual, for me to contact administration because I want the information also, and let that individual know that, you know, I could, that I would either get back with them with the answer or tell them who they can contact?
I'm just going to make a suggestion of that, of course, be up to the board, but when that occurs, and it certainly does occur, if you could send that question to me, well, as all of you know, what I try to do is respond back to make sure the entire board has that information because so many questions that I get from you guys is relevant to all of you. So if it's a question you receive, my guess is there's a chance that if you're getting it, that Mrs. Franklin might have that same question at some point. That would be my suggestion. It certainly works, something directly related to curriculum, to ask Mrs. Swan or it's, that's general information, yes. That's one of the general information.
Okay. So I guess that was my, where I'm a little bit confused. So if I know that it's a specific question that probably should go to facilities, would I still ask you that question, or would it go to the facility?
I think it's always better to come to me for the reason that if it's a question that you're getting and it's a concern for you, my guess is it's going to be shared at some point by a fellow board member. So I may have to direct that question, I may not know, so I may have to direct that back to, for example, Mr. Fox or Mrs. Cheek or someone, that I'll get that answer to you, but when you ask me that question, it's been standard procedure for me to try to get the answer to everyone because I think in most cases, it's relative, irrelevant information for each of.
And I guess that brings up a question I have for Mr. Shatley. Back when we had board meeting in June last year, it was decided then that we would put this procedure in place, going through the superintendent. Although that was never put into board policy, so where is that procedure? I mean, to me, there was like four different things, I believe, in there. Is that board policy, or is that just sitting out there as a motion that was made? I'm just uncertain as to where it sits.
It's the next one, isn't it? Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's a good question.
It's the next one, 2124.
This answers that question, Ms. Churchill.
I'm sorry, I was three years.
No, the new policy really answers, I think, the question that you just asked. It's entitled Board Member Request for Information. Again, this is the new policy. All board members request for information from central office staff must be directed to the superintendent. Requests shall not be directed to the staff. The superintendent must make discretionary decisions on how to expend staff time and resources, and he or she may refer the board member back to the chair to discuss the request heard. Any request of superintendent for information made by a board member 48 hours prior to a board meeting must be copied to the chairman for review and consultation with the superintendent regarding the response as necessary. Any appropriate request for information made by a board member during a board of education meeting that cannot be readily answered will be being referred to the superintendent for follow-up as necessary. If the people are not authorized, it's a superintendent for records custodian under the records law. And I think that's in reference to the custodian that Baldwin made, that, you know, this was discussed over. This actually puts that in writing as a policy.
Now, is any of this from the policy meetings or school association? Totally a new policy.
It's totally a new policy.
Official school spokesperson and board member comments under policy 2220. There is added language to that. Any individual board member that chooses to communicate with persons regarding school matters through any publication, including email and web-based communications, is encouraged to further the aims of this policy by including the following statement. This message is the opinion of, and is not intended to represent the official position of the Buckland County Schools or the Buckland County Board of Education. The time and energy of the school administration is best spent educating the students of Buckland County School to avoid wasting valuable administrative time and resources and to ensure the accuracy of information provided to the public regarding school business. It is the policy of the Board of Education that all board members should inform the superintendent and/or the chair in advance any time they intend to make a statement regarding school business. If an individual board member makes statements to any person or takes any action related to a complaint or concern, the superintendent or designate is hereby authorized to respond as deemed appropriate to any such statements or actions that involve inaccurate or incomplete information. This policy is not intended to limit the right of the superintendent or designate to disseminate information regarding the school system as deemed appropriate. That is all new language to a policy that was adopted December 3rd, 2012.
Quick question on that. Would it be appropriate to add in the first read paragraph, in quotations, this message is the opinion of, and it's blank there, it indicates that whoever was doing that, their name should go there. See what I'm saying?
Final policy is 2230, and is current, has adopted December 3rd, 2012. The additional language has to do with committee procedure. The chair or chairpersons of each committee shall establish the internal procedure of the committee consistent with this policy. The committee may solicit participation from noncommittee members and/or allow public comment as deemed appropriate by the committee. Noncommittee members are welcome to attend committee meetings, but have no right to participate except as permitted by the committee. Any request for a noncommittee member to speak or otherwise participate in a meeting shall be directed to the chair or chairpersons of the committee. The chair will ask for consensus or a motion and second in the absence of a consensus regarding whether and the extent to which a noncommittee member or members may be heard and/or participate in a meeting. A request to add any person to a committee must be made by the committee and shall be directed to the chairperson of the board for final action. That's all new language.
Thank you. Any comments? We're at, well, in time.
This is for review. It would be the first reading at the June board meeting, is that correct?
It would be the first reading at the June board meeting unless you all wanted to waive first reading. But yeah, you would not have it until first reading.
First reading in June, and if we didn't waive it, I don't know if it'd be in all your life. I mean, you all was making the first.
Correct. Unless you wanted to take it up in between some other time, right?
So we'll move on if it's okay to the next one, is the action items. What they have wanted to let y'all know, at least it was nice enough to send us ahead of time, to involve ahead of time some things you want to know from the action, from the agenda to the actual agenda. And just so y'all will know in all particular, I know from here, the closed session minutes of March 2013, the closed session minutes of April 2018. Personnel, CTE local plan, STEM high school contract, AC middle school, at least for the, the, and policy 47, student court, three, seven, zero student discipline hearing procedures. And that's all that I'm aware of in terms of changes in the agenda. And it would be nice, given this would be my first time, it would kind of be nice. And it would be nice, given this would be my first time, and we kind of need to know, is that, is that what y'all expect to hear? Okay. What else? We have about fifteen minutes, and anything I want to talk about?
Yeah, I sent everybody the agenda item list I had turned into by the time. And that wellness policy is attached just to let you know for your information. It's from the School Board Association manual. And it includes the issue of the 30 minutes of energizers that are required by the State Board of Education for K-8s. And also includes the competitive two-state at lunchtime, at real time, and there as well. So get a chance to look at all those times. And I did follow the school capacity information from Wake County. I don't know if this is a good time. The only reason I wanted to take that policy off, I had a question on policy 37, the student discipline three procedures, but I guess nobody, everybody has their computer to pull it up. And the question was just about, it keeps talking about a hearing board in there. But I wasn't sure how many, kind of who was on that hearing board. It, unless I missed it, because I didn't, I probably read it too fast. I didn't know if it's supposed to be administrative regulation with that, that tells, you know, how to put together this hearing board and another policy. That was the only question I had about that. If we can answer that, we will.
We can answer that. Sure, John. Typically, the central office dictates the composition of that, in conformity with state law. State law does not allow any, anybody from the school or who is supervised by the principal who's making the recommendation for long-term suspension to serve on that hearing board. So typically, we have used teachers from surrounding schools that attended, you know, the hearing panels for those recommendations. So kind of basically what happens with the, the law requires us just simply to have due process for a child who's been recommended for long-term suspension. And that involves one hearing. You all go a step further, and most school districts do as well. You go a step further by having two steps of due process. So what happens is, if a kid misbehaves in some sort of inappropriate way, that would, the violation would trigger a long-term suspension recommendation by the principal. The principal just makes a recommendation. So once he makes that, or she makes that recommendation, a hearing panel is formed and the parent is given the opportunity for a hearing from the hearing panel. Typically, even if the parent does not choose the hearing panel, the hearing panel still meets to review all the evidence and the information from the principal. So then the hearing panel makes a decision, or they make a second recommendation, and then that comes to the superintendent. So the superintendent's got the recommendation of the hearing panel, which are typically teachers. But it can also have an administrator on it as well from a different, from a different school. And then the principal's recommendation reviews everything and then makes a decision whether the student should be long-term suspended or whether the student should be assigned to an alternative placement or receive alternative services. Alternative placement being alternative school, alternative services maybe being something like homebound. And, and there are very strict criteria in which the superintendent is, cannot offer alternative services for alternative school, such as if the child is dangerous, you know, like brought a weapon to school or, or created a very substantial disruption of the school environment, something of that nature. We have, got to have really, really good reasons these days. The law changed a couple of years ago to long-term suspend a child. And we don't do it very often.
Mr. Thompson's here, and I, and he, of course, has, we do train our chairs with those hearing. There's Thompson, but, there you go.
What we've done with this is we have, with, working with Mr. Don, who wants to change it, we want them to make sure that we include the required about the law, but not put procedures in the policy. So there is a separate procedural guide that we use for training of hearing board conveners that talks about how to pull together those committees. And the committee typically is a, a teacher from each bigger school within the district where the, the hearing board resides. And then the conveners are actually folks from central office who, because the, the law, as, as Mr. Shatley said, no one on there needs, should be under the direct supervision of the principal at the school where the student's being suspended from. So we go in and read that new full convener because we're not directly involved with the student. We actually did change in that policy, the procedure just a little bit, so that the initial recommendation for suspension comes to the superintendent or his designate. So that we then have that opportunity to consider alternative education settings prior to going to a hearing board. Because if you look at alternative education settings, there's no need to go to a hearing board. And, and no need to go through that. If you offer them an alternative set, so that, that kind of takes care of that. But there is a separate procedural guide that we use, and we're revising it right now for the training for next fall.
I don't know if we should just make a reference at the bottom, we have, might, I think, to put that in the central guide. And when it's going to competition with the hearing board, how big do you want it to be?
Great.
Does that mean this gives you a place back on the, concern? Does that answer your question?
I've already put it back on.
Yeah, but I mean, we'll be approving it, but I don't know if we need to, we're going to make a change?
We can.
I believe so, that wouldn't change it really.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Staff, thank you very, very much. A lot of time wasted today, a lot of great information, appreciate it. And I believe we're eating in fifteen minutes or five o'clock. Are we ready to motion to adjourn?
So, Lou.
Second. All is good.
No, you can't adjourn. You can't. Remember, you can't adjourn unless you're going to adjourn to, you have to say no in person. Right. I mean, there's some...
You can still re-open the meeting, it doesn't matter, go either way.
I mean, there's reminders to adjourn to...
If you want a meeting to, to recess until it's all done.
To our closed session. Recession for our closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.